Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the special 6:00 PM version of the Ferndale City Council meeting on Monday, April 13, 2015. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Pollocka?
Here.
Piana?
Here.
And Mayor Coulter?
Here, yes, thank you. We have a quorum, in fact, a full house tonight. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Piana. Any discussion on the agenda? Marnie, call the roll.
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. The next item of business is presentation, and essentially this special meeting is for these four presentations this evening. And we will begin tonight's presentation with a water rate study. April, do you want to introduce that?
Sure, I do. As you recall, at about this time last year, we had authorized Plant Moran to do what's termed as a water rate study model that could help us move, as we move forward, with determining rates for our water and sewer fund. That has been completed, and Brian from Plant Moran is here to go over the findings and have that conversation with council and look for direction on what to bring for water rates on April 28. So with that, I'm going to bring Brian up to the table. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Brian.
Nice to see everyone again.
Indeed.
So, as you're aware, like April said, we were commissioned to create a water and sewer rate model, which is really a very large but glorified Excel model, a series of interlocking spreadsheets that calculates, based on many varied assumptions, but calculates what is suggested to be the right amount to charge the customers of your water and sewer system, calculates a separate rate for water, separate rate for sewer, over a period of five years, so that the system achieves a target level of modified working capital. Modified working capital is defined as being current assets, cash and receivables, minus current liabilities, accounts payable, one year of debt, accrued, sick and vacation, minus, and this is the modified part, minus receivables. So quite often when you might be looking at the fund to determine how healthy it may or may not be, you might look to the net position or fund balance if it were a governmental fund. But I do not believe that that is the best measurement of whether or not your situation is healthy. So when we look at this modified working capital for your system, you only have about $2.5 million. And the target that we're trying to achieve is closer to $3 million. So, that's assuming things happen the way we expect them to through the year ended June 30, 2015. So, in addition to the increased costs that are coming our way, the DWSD charges an additional 16% for water going forward, the county's charging between 5% and 8% additional for sewer and pollution surcharge. When we take those increases into account with our own internal costs, some of which we can control, some of which we can't, take into account our own debt service, take into account our own capital needs of the system, the model puts out a smoothed rate over five years. And so on this first slide, we have a few years of history, that's the blue lines, followed by a period of no rate increases. So the last time your system experienced a rate increase was 2012. Fiscal years 13 and 14, the rate was then frozen. 2015, and across the board, 10% reduction was levied against both water and sewer, as well as the fixed charge. And so now, with the results of the model and all of these assumptions that we have to take into account, the model suggests, over the next five years, that rate increases would be necessary in order to get back some of that modified working capital that we've recently used. It does not recoup that amount in one year. It does not recoup that amount in three years. It spreads that recoupment period over five full years, so that by the end of 2020, we would hit our target working capital. Now, the model does not suggest that you set rates now for a five-year period, it just smoothes that rate increase over five years. So, the same time next year, we're going to talk about this again with a revised rate model. And two years from now, we're going to talk about this again with yet another revised version of the rate model. It's always a moving target, because things are going to change. We don't really know what's going to happen as DWSD turns into the Great Lakes Water Authority. We don't really know what's going to happen with the county and the cost of sewer. We've made educated guesses based on past performance and our understanding of the current landscape. But that's going to change, just like you do with your general fund budget, just like you do with the budgets of the rest of the city. You may adopt a multiple year, but every single year you're going to go back and revise the information. Any questions so far on this?
Well, I guess just to clarify, the purpose to keep the working capital portion, which you're suggesting needs to be around $3 million?
Yes.
Is to cover the cost of ongoing capital projects without the need to bond? Because the alternative would be to not have that, but then when something happens...
Well, actually, so there are, when I talk about the target working capital, it falls into three, let's call them buckets. The first bucket is an operational reserve, because you pay your customer, or excuse me, you pay your vendors faster than your customers pay you. And so we have to have money in the bank today to pay our people at the next payday, to pay DWSD, to pay the county, because they bill us monthly, but we don't bill our customers monthly. So we've got to have 90 days of operations. Why 90 days? Your receivables are $2 point something million. Your revenue for the year is $8 point something million. So your receivables turnover about four times a year, and 90 days is about 1/4 of the year. So if your customers paid faster, or we billed quicker, we billed every month or every, you know, six weeks, and they had a lesser period of time in which to pay us, then maybe it wouldn't be 90 days, maybe it would be 60. But that really doesn't change that much, doesn't really, doesn't change what we have to charge that significantly. The second bucket, if you will, is for the annual debt service. But in your case, we're only filling this bucket for the water portion of the system. The idea is that you want to have the cash on hand in order to make your bond payment. Going forward, the sewer bond payment is going to be put on the tax bills. So when the tax bills go out July 1, our residents start paying July 2, and so we're collecting money right away to make the bond payment in the fall. And then we should have enough left over when taxes are closed to then make the bond payment in the spring. The water side doesn't necessarily work like that, because it's not going on the tax bill. So we want to make sure that we have one year's worth of debt service on hand at all times to make that next payment. The third bucket is the emergency capital replacement reserve. I call that the oop-something-broke reserve. So if your line springs a major leak, if a significant piece of equipment breaks, we need to fix the situation now. You don't want to have a sinkhole develop, swallowing a car on Nine Mile. You don't want to go months without being able to replace important equipment as financing is arranged or as bonds are issued. So we've got to be able to pay cash money today to remedy the situation. The calculation for that is 2% of the net book value of your capital assets. It results, it's about $300,000 per side, water and sewer. Again, not a tremendous amount of money, but when you add up those three buckets together for water and sewer, it comes out to about $3 million bucks. One last point on the slide, so the green side of the graph represents the percentage increases that the rate, that the model is suggesting the rates go up. So this is a combined rate increase. You have, obviously, the two components, water and sewer. Water, according to the model, should go up about 10% per year. Sewer actually should be just about frozen, if not 0.9% decrease every year for five years. So we're about where we need to be on the sewer side now, but because of the very significant rate increases on water, DWSD's raising your rate 16% this year, 10% is right in that ballpark of reasonable, as far as I can, as far as I can figure. So when you put those together, and you're taking 10% on about a third of your rate structure, because water's cheaper than sewer, and that 0.9% decrease on the other two-thirds, combined, it's 2.8% this year. But as the pieces change from year to year, the percentage goes up just a little bit. So after year five, it's about 4%. That's just on the commodity rate. There is also your ready-to-serve charge, which, like the rest of your commodity rate, was cut by 10% last year. The model does not suggest or assume any changes to the ready-to-serve charge. I believe it is justifiable that you could increase the ready-to-serve charge if you so wanted to. You could also decrease the ready-to-serve charge if you so wanted to, but the commodity rate would go up to compensate. At the end of the day, you still need the same amount of money, whether it comes through the ready-to-serve or it comes through the commodity rate. We did look at possibly reallocating the ready-to-serve charge. Many cities charge a graduated rate based on the size of your meters. So a resident that has a 1-inch meter pays less than a manufacturing facility that has a 6, 8, or 10-inch meter. We looked at that, and unfortunately, because you're such a bedroom-heavy community, and there's only, I forget the number, but it's less than 30 of the larger-sized meters, if you were to go to that graduated rate, on an annual basis, it changes the residential customer's rate by about $11 a year. But on the commercial side, for the larger-sized meters, it could change at thousands of dollars a year. So if that is something that council wants us to look into further, we can. But at the present time, since you're about 97% or 98% residential, it doesn't change the mix that much. I did the same reallocation look back for another community in the last month, and for them, because they do have more commercial, larger meters, it actually would result in an $83 per year decrease for the residential customers. And in that case, that felt like something that was more fair, that that felt like a better adjustment. 83 versus 11 is quite a swing. Any other questions on this before I move to the next graph? So this is your combined water and sewer rates, some history. The blue lines are the history, the green lines are the future. As you can see, the model suggests that it's going to be between 2018 and 2019 before the combined rate gets back to the 2012 rate, which is the last time the city increased rates. So really, in a seven-year period, you're charging the same amount or less as we work our way back up. You're not going to see very many cities would have this same extended period, because certainly your costs have gone up significantly in that same seven-year period. When you look at, on average, a 10% increase from DWSD, on average, an 8% increase on sewer from the county, 5% increase on average from county for the pollution surcharge. So healthcare, while recently has, the rate increases decreased the last couple of years, you go back the last 15 years, you're looking at 8% to 10% a year on that. So I feel good about this, and I think it's very easier to swallow, I guess, when you see that we're still charging less than what we used to, and it takes us several years more to get back to where we were. Mr. Martin?
Yeah, a couple of questions. One, this is predicated on your assumption that 2/3 of the charge is actually the sewer and 1/3 is water, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and is that standard? Because it seems like double jeopardy to me almost, that you're paying for the water coming in and I'm paying for that, plus another double of the water coming out. Is that the real experience for most systems?
Sewer is always more expensive than water, and the, I just had a DPW gentleman explain it this way to me in the last week. The cost of drawing clean water out of the river and then running it through the treatment plant to become drinkable and potable is cheaper than taking what we flush down our toilet and turning it into water that we can release back into the river. The cost of sewer treatment, just with that visual?
Yeah.
It's a lot more expensive.
Okay. And then the 8% to 10% in healthcare costs that you quoted in the model, and I'd ask this, and I'm not sure, the 8%, is that consistent with what we use for an increase in our regular budget of what the, I know we're self-funded, so there's the experience on the general administrative budget or the rest of the divisions, 8% as well?
For healthcare?
Yeah.
I think so. Is Karen here?
Yes.
So we use 8% through the whole budget for healthcare costs?
So ideally, you would use it across all or across citywide. The thing is, we are self-funded, so it is a little bit hard to predict. But healthcare costs increase at a general rate of 8% to 10%, however, the city is taking proactive approaches to lessen your claims.
Right. He's asking, but he's asking now, did we use the same?
No, no, I can answer that. No, you're not using 8% in general fund. But here's why. One year is not a trend. So in the most recent year, your rates have actually gone down 1% or 2%. But I would by no means bet on that continuing for any length of time. And like I said before, if you go back to 2000 and roll it forward over the last 10 to 15 years, health costs did go up 10%, it was double digits.
Sure, but we're hitting the water department with 8%. Let's just use police as an example, and we're allocating healthcare costs by department, correct? So if we assign a different average increase rate to the police department, for example, are you telling me that we know the medical experience by department? That we can assign a percentage adjustment to?
No.
Okay.
That's not what you're saying. No, you can't, we wouldn't do that.
So that leads to me, why would we have different rates of increase for healthcare costs by department as we assign them, then why wouldn't we do 8% across the board? Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
I mean, I'm just looking for the logic behind it.
No, we are, but also too, we aren't going out five years of our budget, so I think it was just him trying to do five years ahead, so...
Okay, so there's a smoothing factor over the number of years and the vision is shorter and the...
Right, because in the general fund, we're only going out two years.
There is a smoothing effect there, and there's also a level of conservatism to make sure that we don't get caught in a situation where we're not charging enough, and that target that we're already short of at June 30, 2015 doesn't become farther away.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Thank you.
Any other questions on this graph? Same graph, but we've added the fixed ready-to-serve charge. So that's the orange component here. For you, for Ferndale, it's a relatively new cost. Many cities around Metro Detroit started doing this at the time that DWSD started charging us on a somewhat fixed basis. They did it primarily for their own cash flow purposes. The idea behind ready-to-serve is that before we sell one drop of water, we have costs that need to be recouped. So whether you sell your $1 million or a million gallons of water, or you sell nothing, the cost of the stamp is here. We have to pay our people to read the meter, we got to pay somebody to issue the bill, we've got insurance costs, we have all of these costs that have to happen. And so the ready-to-serve charge covers, it can cover up to all of those non-commodity charges. Or you can charge a fraction of those commodity charges. And here in Ferndale, you've chosen, completely justifiably, a portion of the possible ready-to-serve charge. So currently, it's 29, it used to be 33, and I would argue, based on your budget, you could, if you so chose, increase that rate to $47 from the 29 it's at now. Our model is not suggesting that, we are not suggesting that. I'm just letting you know that that option is available if it wants to be pursued at some other time. So in real dollars, what does this mean to people? Because that's really the most important part of this, is I can show you graphs and talk numbers all day, but what does this really mean to the residents of Ferndale? So we've selected a couple of examples and built them into the model, residents of various water usage, a couple restaurants, another commercial facility, and all of that is baked into the model, which will be turned over to you. I've included two examples here in the graphs today. So this one is a low-volume user. So this could be a single person living alone, perhaps it's a more senior citizen couple, but this is a very low-volume user. For this particular customer, and this is a real, real example that we then ran through the model, by charging them the 2.8% increase on the commodity charge, but keeping the fixed ready-to-serve charge fixed, not changing it, the increase to them is really only 1.9% or about $6 for the year. Now, on a family of four, it's a little bit more, but it's because they're using more water. Fixed charge stays the same, the commodity charge goes up to 2.8%. Altogether, that's 2.5% a year, or about $23. For a commercial user, it would be substantially more, but commercial user, I mean, a car wash versus a restaurant versus somebody else, it could be all over the board. So it's not necessarily fair to pick one particular one as an example. I think the residential ones, being 97% of your population, make more sense. Any question on these? That's all I have for you as far as prepared remarks. I'd be happy to take further questions about the model, or the assumptions, or how the model works, or what the goal is. I'm here at your disposal.
So questions?
I have a couple of comments.
Please.
I just want to go on record, and I mentioned this before, one of the assumptions is looking at the, I gotta look at my notes. The loss average back to 5% that we moved to 3% because of the new meters, I know it doesn't make a great deal of financial difference in there, but I think there's an assumption in there that we installed the new meters for a reason, we expected some efficiency from that, and to wipe out the assumption of the efficiency of that doesn't sit well with me. So I'm not on board with the move in the 5% back, I guess. And then my second comment or observation is, I really like the way, at our finance director's recommendation, we handled the vehicle fleet on the police department and how we've staggered that out. And I understand EPW runs their trucks or whatever into the ground, I get it, but I'm wondering what the, and this may not be a this year's budget question, but the impact of that cost of continuing to do those repairs versus putting vehicle replacement on a schedule similar to what we do in a police department, albeit in a much, you know, greater time schedule, because certainly we need to turn them over like the police does. If that doesn't make more financial sense, if we look at the long five-year plan versus continuing to patch up the same old trucks and putting money into older, older vehicles until they just won't go anymore, I'd like to be able to explore at some point the opportunity to find a similar schedule for vehicle replacement that may make sense in that kind of environment. I'm good.
Other comments or questions?
Well, my comment is just a summary of a conclusion, I think, of a two-year water study into how we manage our water system and how we pay for that. And so I'm really, I feel really confident what you've produced for this city, and I'm very pleased with the projections and where we're going. One of our goals on council and with staff was to have more transparency, clarity, and consistency in moving forward, and I think this plan achieves those objectives. And so that's just my overall comment.
Brian, I have a question. So the smoothed-out rate increase of 2.5, is it?
2.8.
2.8 for the next five years. Theoretically, and I know we can't predict all those other factors for the next five years, but theoretically, if they were within our predictable range, would that eliminate the current gap that we have and that we need for working capital? And then you would then just go to something more strictly tied to the actual increases? Does that question make sense?
No, it does. If my crystal ball is perfectly clear, and I nailed every one of these assumptions, yes, we would hit our target at the end of five years.
Okay.
But I know I'm not going to do that. I know I'm going to be high on some things, I'm going to be low on others. All should be within the ballpark of reasonable. But when doing rate setting, we recommend doing this every year, always looking forward. The same reason why you do a two- and a three-year budget. The decisions you make today don't just change today, it changes tomorrow. And so it makes sense to constantly set the rates with this long-term goal in mind.
Totally understood. And then, so I guess my question is just, why five years versus three years or seven years? Or, I mean, is that sort of an industry norm kind of thing to do?
We, so at Plant Moran, we tend to do these water studies over the five years. Part of the reason would be, any longer, the assumptions become less reasonable, or they become less predictable. And so the value in those greater years or farther out years is less. In a shorter window, the necessary increase to hit our targets, it would cause higher rate increases. And we're really looking to eliminate the volatility, keep the increases, because you have to increase rates over a period of time. Costs go up, we have to compensate. So five years seems to be about the right amount to smooth it out and start to develop expectations within the community that they're not going to be hit with any more surprises. We lay out this plan, we implement it and update it every year, and plus or minus 1% or 2%, the model should continue to be in the realm of reasonable.
Okay.
So I do one of these at a township just south of Metro Airport. We've done it for about 15 years. And now that we have 15 years' worth of data built into the model, I know within a percent or two, once I hear what DWSD's increasing them, I can tell you what it's going to be. And they have a lot of capital projects that they've baked into it, and it just really runs like a machine. So after, when we go to present it to the township board, literally, I talk for five minutes about what we changed in the assumptions, and then everyone's on board, because it just becomes that much of, it's just a process.
All right. Okay. Okay. So I guess the thing is, staff is going to look for some direction, right? Because otherwise, absent any sort of, well, Dan has raised a couple already, but otherwise, your recommendation is to adopt this formula and...
Sure, and if you want, I mean, we can, we can have this conversation as part of the budget conversation that we're having here with the general fund, so we can kind of have it as a bigger picture, a bigger pool. But at the end of the process today, we'll need to have some direction, and where council wants to go with the water rates.
Excellent.
Modern sewer.
Okay. Well, Brian, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
All right. All right, our next presentation is the DDA budget. Thanks for being patient. Just so folks at home know, the DDA isn't City Department, but the law says that their budget is approved by council. So that's why they come here once a year to share with us the annual budget that they adopted for council's consent. So Christina is here from our DDA.
Thank you. And...
And good evening.
Good evening.
So just to briefly go over this, knowing that we have a little bit of a window of time before your next meeting, I wanted to go over some of the highlights in terms of revenue projections. I know you have your numbers in front of you. There are some modifications that have been made compared to what you'll see in my PowerPoint as well. But the highlights are that basically, we are not going to be seeing a decrease any further in the downtown. We are stabilizing. And we could potentially see a 1% growth, but we are not budgeting that in, we're being conservative. Personal property tax elimination is still an elected item by businesses, but in 2017, it will become automatic. So I'm sure we will see a change with those taxes in the future years. There is also, obviously, things still at the state level that we do not know will happen, and that could potentially change those reimbursements that we currently are getting as well. Tax chargebacks, which are uncollected taxes, are anticipated to reduce, as well as the unrealized gains actually should lessen this next year. And actually, compared to my numbers on the screen and compared to what you have in front of you, the projection from the finance director is lower, which is a good thing to see there. We are part of the pool, the city's pool, in terms of the funds. Sponsorship contributions, we are, once again, being conservative, but you do see a decrease compared to previous years, because we will not have an Art Town exhibit income projection for this next year. We're actually going to be taking from our reserves that we have built up in terms of the fundraising that we have done over the number of years for the Art Town project. We will have an exhibit that will be installed over the next two years coming up in June. And we are anticipating a 9.7% increase in our event income, although when you compare that to the decrease in the Art Town, it kind of starts to balance it out a little bit. Participation fees in co-op advertising have gone up slightly, but it is a small number overall, so you do not see a large jump in that as well. So overall, and based upon what you are looking at, and to just clarify this, is you have 462,800 for fiscal year ending 2016. That does take in my two numbers of tax increment financing and PPT reimbursement, kind of combining those together in projections. And then, as well as the other change that you'll see in there, is the unrealized gains dropping from $20,000 to $10,000. In terms of expense projections, expenses do reflect our goals of our Board of Directors. We are emphasizing streamlining our operations, our business outreach, increasing our business outreach, and preparing for development. And development in areas such as Vester Street and at the corner of West Nine Mile and Planavon as well. Expenses, when you get to the bottom line, you'll do, you will see that they are over our income projections. And our board is still working on their budget right now to be able to balance the budget. We do not have that here for you today. We were not able to put a quorum together prior to this meeting to work through those items, but we are anticipating to do that at this Thursday's board meeting and until we get it done. So we will be coming back, I'm sure, with a revised budget at that point.
Because, just to clarify with April, I mean, we have to adopt a balanced budget on the 28th?
Yes.
So, okay.
Yes. And then anticipating some of the future projects that we have coming down the road. So you'll see that our reserve fund is extremely healthy. Typically, a standard reserve fund would be 20%. We are actually at 70%, which is very high. However, when you look at future years in terms of capital improvement projects that we need to do, we really need to start looking at potentially other financing options, possibly bonding options, to do those capital improvement projects in order to really spread it out over a number of years. We have typically done a pay-as-you-go DDA. When we have enough money, we do a project. But we are looking at some very significant projects in the future, Vester Street being one of them. Also, we are going to be looking in the number of couple of years, redoing Nine Mile and Woodward, all with BRT even in mind. So those are things that we have to start planning for.
So do you prefer questions at the end through the chair and sorry, or as we go?
Christina, I'll leave it up to you.
Maybe if it's easier as you go?
Sure. So that 70% reserve fund, that 70% are your revenues?
Yes, based upon the revenue, yes.
So the cash value of that account is about what right now, then?
The cash value, in terms of what we have currently in.
What that 70% represents, how much money?
It's about $389.
Okay. And so for the future projects, how does it weigh up to $389, and I know there's other fundraising and stuff, versus what you plan to expend? How far short are you from what you have on hand and expect to accrue? And what I understand, you have to finish the budget, versus what's on your docket to do?
For the future, for fiscal year ending 2017, you're going to see that we'll be dropping those reserves drastically. We would be down to probably about a $40,000 reserve fund. Anticipating the fact that if you are able to procure a TAP grant for the Streetscape projects, we have to put in 20% at a minimum, and usually a little bit more, because the TAP grants are requiring a little bit more. It ranges from 20 to, typically, 20 to 30% is the norm. But then we also have to add in another 20% on top of that for engineering costs, because those are not covered by TAP grants. Once again, with a TAP grant, you're not secured until you actually receive authorization for that as well.
Thank you.
Oops. Sorry, I have a spot come on and be up. I just did a quick summary of expense projections, and just to kind of make it real easy for you, and I'll go to the high points of this, is that you'll see that with our building rental, it shows that our office is static, but our storage is in a slight increased cost. So we are looking for other options for storing some of our extra materials and equipment that we have. We are also anticipating a breakdown of public utilities from the finance director to understand, better understand our utilities. Most of our utility cost is public utilities, not our office utilities, but public utilities. In terms of repairs and maintenance, this is another line item that has changed slightly in terms of what's moving, is that you'll see that we are changing from our copier rental to a buyout and a maintenance program, because we have actually come to the end of our lease agreement with it, and we have the option to buy it out. And so you'll see that reflection both in repairs and maintenance, and then in equipment rental. Phone changes, phone and internet, that reflects some of the changes that we made to Comcast, moving to Comcast this year with internet. We are also still in the process of making a decision on our phone, phone changes at this next board meeting as well, so that may adjust. Travel and training, everybody always wants to know what's in travel and training, so I kind of threw that up there so people understood. But it includes volunteer and business recognition programs, our board retreat and our planning sessions, as well as conferences and training for staff and volunteers. We also have various business meetings and education programs that we put on as well. Our landscaping contract estimates, I am anticipating approximately an eight-man-hour increase per week. We are definitely seeing an increase in traffic, and that in turn goes to garbage. So we have to continuously do our landscaping, our litter and debris removal, and continuously keep up on that. So we are doing a, we have an RFP out right now, and we are looking to renew that and bring that back to the board in May, potentially June at the latest. Operating supplies and services, this is where really a lot of our Streetscape amenities gets budgeted to. So it's our amenities and our repairs and replacements. So that just gives you a breakdown. You'll see most of the increase is attributable to trash receptacles, that we want to replenish some new trash receptacles downtown, as well as GFI replacements that we need on the light poles that we're working with DPW on, and then also some minor increases in landscape supplies as well. We will be replacing out other things that we normally do, like benches and bike racks and banners, and our waifining and holiday decoration programs. In our contractual services departments or funds, a number of the items include our Vester Street block development and marketing that, as well as the office analysis component of the city's master plan, budgeting a certain amount of money for that. We budgeted approximately $11,000 to put towards that. Graphic design and photography services, as well as web hosting and maintenance, and some of our other communication sources that we use. We are looking to implement a CRM to streamline our operations this year, so that would be a new item in cost as part of our contractual services. In addition to that, we also are looking to add a volunteer management software program as well. As we have a number of volunteers that we always have onboard, we are also looking to grow our volunteer system and to really streamline and make that a lot easier for us. The contractual services does also include attorney fees, our satellite music downtown, and in the text message system that we use with our construction projects. Special events, they do include the Art Town exhibit, Art Town, Art of the Cocktail event, Holiday Hoof, Holiday Ice Festival, Get Real, Fido does Ferndale, and also our sponsorship of other organizations like Main Street Oakland County Awards Program and the Chamber Gala. And as I mentioned before, there are no expenditures, so in terms of the Art Town exhibit, so there are those modifications and those expenditures as well. Printing and publishing, that does include our advertising, our brand materials, our business guide. We are adding in parking promotions and business and recruitment materials that will be new this year. And then public improvements, our build program, which is our facade reimbursement program this past year, that we've had it at $15,000. In previous years, we've had it at $25,000 in funding. We are going to try to stick with that $15,000. But we're also looking at expanding that build program, expanding it so that we can look for business and retail location incentives. In terms of capital outlay, some of the things that I've already mentioned before, but just to kind of give you the hit list, waifining signage installation, that would be two kiosks and cultural signs, that would be added into the downtown, as well as Shipper Park redesign, Vester Streetscape engineering and construction in 2016. The Laverne-Oy intersection, still something that we have to discuss and debate, but that is something that we've looked at and around about in that intersection. So projections, again, would be in 2016 for engineering and 2017 for construction. Our Troy Streetscape on the south side, looking at concepts and partial engineering in 2018. And these timelines do sometimes move, depending on if a project starts moving in an area. So we are flexible in that respect. And then pedestrian alley enhancements, tying in the northeast alley behind Como's and the Elks into the Vester Streetscape. We are actually designing for that right now and looking at what the cost would be, as well as incorporating the area, obviously, for the garbage containers that are back behind all those restaurants and so forth. As I had mentioned before about grants and funding for this, I think this is one of the biggest areas of our expenditures that will be coming up. And we definitely have to come to some decisions over the next few months as to how we're going to handle that moving forward, because we want to be prepared to go in and really begin our engineering on some of the projects as well. Personnel, we do have two full-time personnel and one part-time. We are looking to hire an additional full-time, which would be our communications and marketing manager position. This would be changing that position from a contractual position to a full-time position. So with that, you'll also see changes in benefits as well. I'll have this, you can keep that if you want to post that up on the city's website, but this does also give a little bit more of a chart as to what each of those positions do for the DDA. And then an overview of our benefits in terms of what those costs would be and what those adjustments would be there. Overall, you are seeing that there would be a deficit this year of approximately $57,000. So as I mentioned, the board is definitely looking to reduce that. That will automatically drop by another $10,000, because we have the unrealized gains in there. So we're down to 47 at this point that we'll be working on. So expect a vigorous meeting on Thursday. And, but so as you see, and we're looking at the Vester Streetscape project in 2017, with that project, if we don't have any sort of bonding component, we would be then dropping down to $41,000 in our reserve funds. It's definitely not what we want to do. We want to make sure that we continue to implement our downtown development plan, and that's what you have a plan for. So you can really use that plan for your financing and future projects. And that's about it. All right, we kept that.
All right. Great. Any questions or comments, Christina?
Yeah, I have a couple through the chair. I think this is about the budget that we have in front of us in relationship to the line items that you had on your presentation. The city has been moving to some priority-based budgeting type of descriptions. And so at our citywide goals or budget session on the 23rd Atlanta Day, when we all live for Atlanta, we were talking about clarifying some of the revenue and expense line items to better align with how you described them. And so I saw some discrepancies, and I was wondering if you could talk about them a little bit. The reserve fund, I don't see the $389,000 in relationship to this budget.
On this page that you're talking about?
Yeah.
That does, I don't know if there is something that you can address, Karen?
Well, the reserve fund, I guess, what is the definition of reserve fund first?
Oh. Oh, description of reserve fund first. So, okay. So a reserve fund would be any funds that have been unutilized in future, in previous years, also funds that we have actually purposely put aside to start building up those reserves. So basically, to make sure that we have a healthy budget, so if we have those moments of, I hate to say the oops, or something needs to be fixed, that definitely is why we have those reserve funds. But we also build it...
Where are they on here?
Where are they on here?
That's...
It wouldn't be included on here. It wouldn't be included on there, it would be considered your fund balance from the financial statements, where you're not positioned from the financial statements audited in 2014. So you'd have to pull that in order to look, to compare that as your reserve fund. Now, there are certain adjustments that are done for the financial statements that I think, you know, you've looked at, but it's not included on here, because it is what we would be familiar with as fund balance.
Okay. Does that make sense? It does make sense. I just don't know how, is there an opportunity to add it on here as somehow, just to make sure it's seen, because it's very easy not to, it's easy to forget $389,000.
I would like to see it, too.
Can we try to make that happen?
She has to do it manually.
Oh, you have to do it manually.
But we can, we've done that before.
Yeah.
It's an important number to...
And then, just some other comments in terms of this, making some clarifications and linkages.
Sure.
Event income, you had on your presentation, but I don't see event income as a revenue line item.
So that would be your contributions and your participation fees.
Right. So for the city, we're trying to actually name them what they are. So if it's event income and only event income, then maybe you want to break that out as a line item in your budget in terms of improving security for the budget. And then in your presentation, you had the operating mills?
Yes.
Revenue, and how does that translate? Is that the property taxes, personal or just the...
That would be the voted.
That would be the what?
The voted.
The voted property taxes. And maybe we could put a little notation there, that it's actually the operating mill, rather than...
On the DDA?
Yeah, just for clarity purposes. And then you had some items in there about capital improvement, and I know the DDA does their own capital improvement. But is that somehow piping in and linking to the capital improvement plan that the city has? Because you expressed interest in doing bonding, and we do that long-term projections and what that does to our mileage rate, and since the voters have to pay for that. So how are you integrating, how do you see the DDA integrating your needs into this long-term planning that the city is looking to do?
We have beyond those discussions. I mean, we've probably, I know April and I have been talking about this at least for the last nine months. And as the city really began looking into the bonds that are coming before voters, coming up, and I don't know if April could maybe address that a little bit further, but...
Sure. They're in tandem. The current mileage requests out there for the street and park renewal doesn't include their specific projects. Is there more, I would say, streetscape-oriented?
Yeah.
Would that be fair to say? So, but we try to marry where they, where, take into consideration what projects they have going on, and we're doing a new project, but they're not part of that current street mileage that we're renewing right now. So we have had to talk about, in order for them to do those streetscape enhancements, they would have to go out for a bond as well, but it wouldn't be voter-approved, it would be, have to fit in their budget. So we're working through that right now, make sure that we could, if we could do that, what that would look like. We have to start working through that process.
Okay. And I know we have to wrap up, but also in this budget, it has parking revenues and parking expenditures as part of the DDA Development Authority Fund on the back, or is that a different?
Parking revenue.
Oh, sorry, it says parking fund, but there's no header. I got confused.
That's separate.
That's separate, sorry.
Ooh, we are.
Move me on.
And we have two minutes until...
I'm getting kicked, I'm getting kicked, I'm telling, the mayor's telling me to shut up.
We can finish this conversation at...
Okay. I just encourage the DDA to consider the priority-based budgeting and look at how we budget by services and projects. And I encourage you to talk to April and Joe about how to better define your budget in that way.
Sure.
Happy to do so.
Other comments or questions? Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. April, we have two more items on the special agenda, which is the general fund budget summary and the non-general fund budget summary. How do you want to handle that?
Should we figure that would more than likely happen? So I would ask that when we go to approve the following agenda, that you would add as E, the budget summaries for fiscal year '16 and '17 for both general and non-general?
To the regular agenda?
To the next meeting.
At the next meeting? Today? Today's next meeting.
Yes, today, yes, I'm sorry.
What about the fact that the judge is here and has been patiently waiting? Do you...
I'm just here in case there's some reason that you want to talk about.
Yeah, because we actually, I think, took up your budget at our Saturday.
If you have any questions for the judge, you could ask him now at all, but I think we were, you guys had a great budget, so you're more than welcome.
Yeah, we actually did review your budget at that Saturday. If you want to, if there's anything you want to share with us or say, because you've been patiently sitting here for an hour, I encourage you to come up and do that, but you don't need to sit to...
I'm sure that everyone would love for me to say as much as I could possibly say. However, in light of the hour, I will say thank you as long as everything's explained and to your satisfaction. I'm glad for that.
Thank you, Judge. Judge Longo, thank you very much. I appreciate that. All right, so we will move C and D to items E and F on the regular agenda of the regular meeting. And with that, I will adjourn the special meeting.